I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Edri is excused for the record. Here, here.
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 Here. I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda of November twelfth, two thousand and thirteen as presented. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda of November twelfth, two thousand and thirteen as presented. Motion by Bodley. Second by there. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. I accept the motion to approve the minutes of October tenth, two thousand and fifteen, regular board meeting.
There are two corrections should be made. Brian's name is B R Y E N, not B R bring. On the second page.
What is that correction?
Correction is spelling Graham's name. Otherwise, I would maybe accept it. With that.
First thing I can do after your gun.
Accept the minutes. Second. Second by Chapman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty eighth, two thousand and fifteen, special council meeting.
Approve the minutes as presented.
Second by Chapman. Second by Bodley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Any public comments? We will move on. Please report Scott.
Great, thank you. Hopefully everybody had a chance to look over the report. Statistic wise, kind of slow or down from previous month, but we were busy doing other complaints. If you watch the news, you probably figured out what we did for most of the month. Some training, a lot of travel, a lot of follow up complaints. We've got the Explorer ready to go for winter and after tomorrow when the car gets fixed or repaired on, if it recalls notice, we'll have it back in service and ready to go. Any questions?
Thanks Scott.
Thanks.
Sam, DPW?
Everybody should have a copy of DPW operations. For some reason, extremely busy month, but what's on paper doesn't show that, but I'm telling you it was a very busy month. Last month, month of council meeting, we talked about opening the swamp up for leaves. We opened it up. We had one person bring brush in. We had my camera. They come down, picked it all up, all did away, and nobody has done it since. And everybody's using it for leaves now and it's going really good. In front of the therapy shop. Took out a hundred and forty feet of sidewalk, which was very bad, and went ahead and replaced it. For budgeting purposes, that hundred and forty foot of sidewalk, we could never use for budgeting purposes because we had to cut the blacktop road. It was just absolute mess. We had to regrade everything. Backside of it, we had to pull out eight inch concrete for the slabs going in, just absolute mess. And you'll see number, you know, everything else pretty typical, typical. Steven myself attended the regional AWWA meeting in Gaylord. I put two new springs in the front end of the ninety four plow truck. We didn't put them in, we hadn't put in. Todd's well in service. And we helped Scott out on his, what he had born on M eighty eight. Any questions?
Are you going to replace any of the sidewalk control deterrence on the side where they took the tree out?
I don't think we're going to replace any sidewalk there because sidewalks are good.
Is it okay?
But we're going to, the stump is going to get grown. Unfortunately, it'll probably be in the spring. Oh, and you'll see on there, we replanted three maple trees. This, we're going to start doing that every time we cut a tree out. We're going to go ahead and plant them. Any questions?
Sam, down at the swamp, are the guys going to get a chance hopefully this week or I guess going into the land, it doesn't matter, but the base steel sign. As you go in and get that.
We just haven't got it.
And then the only other thing I have is in the potholes, I believe it's Moyer Road, is that part of one of our near future plans in like the twenty year plan? Seems Moyer Road, or Harrick I should say, I'm sorry, Harrick from Old State to Ballard is kind of pretty rough in some spots there. More towards.
Rob, you want to talk around that one?
We are scheduled, what, in fourteen?
Okay, for that section, okay. That's all I got, man. Thank you. It's been a while. I have no correspondence with anybody. Any correspondence to let the chair? Committee report. Rob?
Nothing more than Sam said about the sidewalk and that's where we're at on that right now.
Good. Any questions for Rob?
No, he's in his room.
Thank you.
Rob, sure. These are backwards, right? This should be Denise, right?
That's right, I can report to Water. Some water readings are all done and set up two new storage columns. I don't know if it was over, but all the water's been turned off for the season in the park and other end.
Bill, law?
She pretty well covered everything. There was, worked with Bob there Halloween night there, that was, that was pretty nice. I thought Bob had grown up in the town, so I was introducing him to people as if they should remember him. Actually, he left here when he was seven years old, so they didn't remember. When I mentioned that as Al Burnett's son, well, oh yeah. But that was, that was nice to spend some time with Bob.
Can I turn you in there real quick, Ken?
Absolutely.
Halloween, I didn't put anything down here, I was down one hundred cups of cider. Just so you guys were aware of that. I'm sorry to forget.
It was pretty good crowd for the weather though, I thought it was.
Rob, did you get communications out there?
Well, Joe and I were talking before, I got to get with Cory to get all the passwords, which I'll try to get this weekend. Been working on getting camcorders for video meetings, but other than that. Actually, a new position, so it's kind of working on it. See what works.
Thank you. Joe, anything?
Nothing real new with us here. Looked at the budget a little bit, getting ready to prepare for our next budget. The only thing I'd have is, I know Rob and Sam got together, working some budget stuff together. Ken and I have got together with Rachel a little bit on the one on one and so just by the end of November, anybody who's got capital improvement plans or anything or such for projects, get them to us. Normally, right after deer season, we'll get into doing the next budget. Lima, I know there was some stuff in the park area with capital improvements.
Yeah.
Just an idea or a thought of what we want to propose for a budget and stuff.
Absolutely.
That's all I got right now.
Any questions for Joe? Thank you, Joe. Lila, parks?
Yes, I contacted Nancy Allen with the Department of Analysts. She was the environmental health program for the park. And there was a question on having forty units, so if we don't have, we've only got thirty nine. And they need a map showing exactly how many units we have down here to rent. And they want them numbered and they want to have that set them directly so that they can go ahead and put that down so that we won't have any problem. And there will be no race in the amount of money we have to pay. The money we had to pay for the last thirty seven will be, will remain the same, but they want that map, so.
I'm sorry, who's they again?
It would be the environmental health programs from the Department of Environmental Quality. I have the letters here if you care to look at them.
Lila, we might be able to, I don't know if Jack can help us with this or Cory or Rachel even, but take a snapshot of the reservation.
I will look at, yeah, but how can you tell how many? I can't come up with the right number of units that's down here. It doesn't quite show it up.
Why can't we, why can't we just show them the map on our reservation?
That's what I'm saying, we just snap it up. Now, when they're online and they hover over a site, it tells you the number.
Okay.
It's something that we've talked about in the past or was maybe having them put directly on there when people, before they hover, but it should show all thirty nine of them. I think we went through that once before on there even.
Well, I was looking at it and Sam said we could probably have, Jack would probably enlarge it, you know, but still. Maybe I'm just not looking at it quite right, but it's somewhat, don't seem right, so. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, no, these aren't.
It's hard to tell which ones they really are. Because there's no thirteen.
It's only one missing.
That's why they made a mistake and given us, tell us we had forty units to rent.
In case, in case anybody wants to know what we did, we had a health inspection down there at Park and we failed because our camp, our permit says we have forty campsites.
Okay.
And for twenty years, the health department is the one that does our inspections. For some reason, that day when he inspected and our permit says we have thirty seven campsites, he decided to cover all the campsites. And lo and behold, to my surprise, he said, you got forty? And I said, no, we got thirty nine. Well, they didn't renew camp ground permit. Because we were two sites over what we were licensed for. So that's what she's doing. She's in the process of renewing it for the thirty nine sites. And the fees are the same for up to thirty campsites.
No, we took thirteen up here, remember, we don't have thirteen.
I think once they see it. And then by spring, we just have to get a site.
They want a map showing all of them.
If we got, or I don't know, if I took a completely good one, yes, you can take a snapshot.
Whatever, whatever, but yeah. Then I'll leave it up to you guys then. It's in your hands.
Was there something about a sign down there? Do we have to get phone numbers posted?
I, there was nothing said about that in this letter from her. Just that. The prompt attention, of course. And if we have any questions, call her. But she was very glad that I contacted her when I got this there and talked with her. And she appreciated that. She said, yeah, just keep me posted and let me know as soon as you get that in so we can take care of it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Now, do you want all this paperwork here now? I can't, she's got to send it, I can't.
We'll take care of it. Thank you for calling.
Could I ask, has there been any interest in the campground from hunters?
I don't know, I haven't checked. Like, not that I can see.
See, before they were talking about paying additional.
Right.
And she said, no, we don't have that additional, we have to pay. We're creating, I think Rachel's already sent a check for, for the, hasn't she, Ken? Did you have till or she had sent that?
I don't think we didn't.
You haven't, you haven't sent a check? Hundred nineteen dollars, yeah. For the campground, for the registration? Okay, well, there's the paperwork.
Okay.
Do you mind, yes?
Okay, thank you. Any questions? President's report, just a few quick ones. The DDA did apply to become part of mainstream program, so they had a presentation on it the other night, so. If you were to ask me, I'd say it's ninety nine point nine percent that they will be accepted into it, but they won't know for a while yet, so that went well. We're going to have a meeting with Consumers Power, kind of streetlight audit they did, so that, we're talking, that's December fourth. So I don't know what they found or nothing, they're just going to come and meet with us. And I'll talk to you later. We're also going to have quite a discussion on why they're not fixing the lights. Tim Petroski wants to know why they're not, but so we'll deal with that in the meeting too. I talked to a Steve something, I don't know his last name, from Michigan DNR about our grant. Two days ago. Within a week or so, we should get a letter package that's going to tell us our final score and everybody else's final score that's plotted. That's all it's going to show. On December fourth, they have their board meeting and that's when they make their recommendations. So at that point, you'll know you've been recommended, which probably passes, but you don't truly get any money until spring or summer of two thousand and fourteen, when they pass the appropriations to release the money. So, it's moving along, that's all I can say. December fourth is the, is the day that we find out we're the fifth, you know, the day after. That's what they, that's what their board meeting is for, is to discuss where they're going to give the money to. That's moving along good.
Do they recommend just one or can they recommend multiple?
No idea, but every year I think they do it different, that, from what I've understood from.
Want me to chime in on that?
Yes.
They can choose one large project, the amount of money they have in the pool, or they can divvy it up into many smaller projects. And it's all, and it's based on the board's recommendation and that sort of thing, so it's really hit or miss. And there's really no science as to the way they divvy up the pie.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All I have. I accept the motion to approve the bills, prepaid the amount of eighty seven thousand, five hundred and sixty six dollars and eighty nine cents. Payroll in the amount of five thousand, four hundred and thirty two dollars and seventy five cents. Payables in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars and forty six cents. For total approved bills of one hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars and ten cents. I can motion to approve the bills as presented. Motion by Bodley. Second. Second by Chapman. Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Motion passed. Thank you. I have no new business pressing. Does anybody have? Anything? A lot to action, I mean. First one is the two thousand and fourteen council meeting schedule. Have we, have we, I didn't check to make sure all these dates are truly. The third date, okay. Everybody has that in front of them? And those have been approved by the township, right?
Yeah.
So they just say, okay. I accept a motion to approve the two thousand and fourteen council meeting dates as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Clark. Second by. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Second action by them is to put a plow frame on the new DPW truck. Again, that is a better quote, probably. I guess first I would accept the motion to put the plow frame on.
Couple of questions. Sam, who's this from?
First, we probably have to motion.
Just so we do it properly, you have motion, then a second, then a little discussion. I remember that, so we'll try to do things.
Motion by Chapman, purchasing and install a plow frame, have a new plow frame installed on the new DPW truck. Is it a second? Second. Second by there. Any discussion?
Sam, who is this quote from?
Western dealer, Ertz Auto and Ottawa parts or Ottawa truck parts.
Sixteen hundred looks like a lot of money, but when you, when you start dealing with them, you can't, you can't cut and splice wires anymore. You have to buy a harness that fits that particular model truck. And it, you know, they got like modules, they got, everything is computerized, you can't cut and splice the wires anymore. You change the impedance and nothing works. You got to, you got to buy, most of this is, you can see there's only three hundred dollars labor. Best install that stuff, but you have got any choice, I mean, that's a, you can't use last years, you can't use the stuff off the old truck.
They got you coming and going there.
Yeah, that's.
My only thought, I know I've talked to Sam about a lot, we have to decide if you want the plow left on the truck it's on or the one on the new truck. That, that's the big question to me, is which truck do you want to use for the plow truck?
Well, if he, if he puts his mount on this truck, he can have, he can have it on either one, whichever one is not tied up or something else.
In that scenario, Sam, knowing that the water truck currently has a mount that accepts that D plow, how long?
Those won't be accepted anymore.
Oh, it doesn't?
No, because it had to be reloaded from Ford to Chevrolet.
Oh, okay.
That, that's either.
Oh, okay, and this time I was thinking we had two trucks that were available to do it and, okay, well, that takes care of that question then.
So then I have to go on the new truck?
It doesn't have.
Doesn't have.
Well, that's, that's my thought.
If we keep the, if we keep the O seven Ford, it's, the plow's up temped right now, I'm not saying.
Yeah, I'm just, that's just.
I'm asking to be, to have permission to take it off that truck and put it on the new one.
That fits the plow he's got.
Do I want to drive an O seven or do I want to drive a fourteen? I want to drive the fourteen. I want a plow with it. That's, that's why I come to you guys and ask you, let you make that decision.
It would be better to handle it.
If you tell me I'm going to, if you tell me I'm going to put it on, keep it on the O seven and plow snow, that's what I'm going to do. I'm putting it back on you guys.
Or what if we get the new truck for?
To get rid of the old water.
All right. Now, why don't we put it on the new truck?
My only, so why not on the new truck? My only thought would be to maintain value of the new truck as we want to sell it two and a half years down the road. And this will do as well, it's, 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 it's just a way to.
Yeah, maybe so, but then we buy the new truck to use and to be available, for Sam to use the best of our ability. So why not try to save it, like, put it in the bank or something, hold it in the back there until you can't use it? This way, he can use it. That's what we wanted.
And we are using it. I'm saying, did we buy it to become a plow truck? We have.
It can be, but it can both ways.
It's just, it's a.
I ordered it for a small plow truck, the one we got, with the transmission lockers in it, but that doesn't mean the O seven.
We've talked about a lot to be answered.
So, as a person who's ever plowed anything in his life, O seven, what does it have on it currently? It has a plow.
Yep.
And it has everything on it, right?
Yeah. I didn't say it, no.
All right. This bid here then is for.
The frame and all the wiring harnesses and the controls.
All right. How many hours do you think you put on the O seven for the next four months? How many hours you think you put on it for a plow?
I couldn't tell you, Rob. I know if, if I, if I take the, if we didn't plow on the O seven, that's the one I'm going to take over. Because when you're in a three thirty mark, you start to drive it home and that's when you're involved.
I, I think it's a great ability to have it be either truck, either or. What I also got to look at is on the economical side of it, it's, is it really neat? We haven't had it available on two trucks before.
What is the O seven truck?
If it's O seven, it's a pool, you can take this on.
Yeah, we bring that on too, or we're going to keep putting all that wire on the O seven, I'm telling you, it's not, if it was black and white, I'd have a mind made up. But it's not.
Well, the two thousand and fourteen has a whole lot more amenities to make you comfortable to plow with the snow over the two thousand and seven, but that's all. I, I can't say one's better than the other, because if you didn't buy the fourteen, I'd be happy with the O seven, so.
And sixteen hundred dollars really, when you look at the price of it, is a good price for the mount, all the wiring and then putting it on, I mean, that, that's not a bad price. I was looking, I was guessing closer to around two thousand what I initially thought about.
I'm not disputing that, I just want to make, so, the O seven breaks down, we can just put the plow from the O seven on the fourteen, correct? Yes or no?
If we have it, if.
If we have all that installed.
Yes.
Okay. I said, bear with me, thank you.
If you install all that, I'm going to take.
You're going to use the vehicle.
Basically, with these unit mounts, the way they are, quick mounts, you pull up to it, flip a lever, plug your harness in and away you go.
Away you go. You're right.
All right.
I've been thinking about it for two years and I still be sitting there thinking. I, I. I thought it was a great idea. The only thing I wonder is, we all said we'd like to try in two and a half years to sell the new truck. And just keep that our program of replacing vehicles so we have nice vehicles in the village, cheaper cost of maintenance. But what do you think the value of that truck comes down to now, trying to sell it, or will it probably still for two seasons? That's my question. Does it drop the value a lot or does it?
Yeah.
I don't.
I don't think it makes any difference in the municipal.
I don't think it would increase the value of it either.
It wouldn't increase it, but it would take anything away and you could take the mounting off of it. If they don't change the.
That's the scenario we're at now.
You don't know that.
I know one thing, you don't see them stopping. I'm going to assume they can sold with the mount, they mount by, by the way things go, and that's just in my mind. I was just wondering what the value differs.
I would tell you that in three years, I do see a spike in the new front plow.
I was going to say the same.
Because the western's going to be wore out.
Probably going to be wore out anyways.
Let's live in the stone plow.
That, that plow's going to be wore out, I mean, it's going to be a ten, eleven year old plow at that point.
Well, so that's going to reflect the issue of budget.
And I think that eleven year old plow on the front end of that new truck will have, will, you'll get more out of that truck because you had that D plow on it.
You'll have a lot more potential there.
Oh, you're saying at that point we might try, that would work.
Sell the whole.
You think you'd sell the plow on?
Right.
In that scenario, that's what happens two and a half years down the road.
So in that scenario, then, if we're looking at the old plows, or the, the plow we have now is going to be wore out in three years, if we're looking at selling the truck in three years, would we be further out just waiting and buying a whole new package for the new truck if we sell it?
I mean, we can break up. I'm still making a pros and cons list, but.
We got a good deal on the fourteen, so. I see us getting in the O seven truck within the next three years too.
And if that's the case, would we be better to have the plow on it because it's there already?
If we have a coin.
You have a much better form. I think we've discussed it enough. We all know what we're going to do.
I, I haven't made up a mind yet.
I have.
Okay.
I don't.
Well, it's comfort and convenience, you know. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it for that, I'm not. Is there anybody comfortable, is everybody comfortable with?
I'm comfortable with doing it, I am.
Okay, all right. There's been a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call, just since there's been a lot of discussion.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. I knew I had to pick at that moment. Sam, luckily, you have to come up first.
Thank you.
No, okay, I love you very much. Sam might talk about it a lot.
Three o'clock in the morning, you might believe it's something comfortable.
All it does is, you all start. I thought we might telephone over. No.
Now he's just talking.
We're all sleeping, dropping off, seeing ourselves.
So you'll just take that in.
Three in the morning.
Get it done.
Okay. Enjoy it.
And obviously, the equipment.
Under old business, Rob, do you want to just discuss the camcorder for a minute?
Yeah, we, Rachel and I and even Cory helped us a little bit, we looked into like seven different cameras. And they're anywhere from five hundred to two seventy five. We've kind of settled on one. We're going to see if we can get Best Buy to maybe put a demonstration on it. It's, and then we can get a bundle package with it, comes with a fifty eight inch tripod, a thirty two gigabyte card, a case, and it's, everything's, it's going to be about four hundred bucks, a little over four hundred dollars. But I will talk to the lady at Best Buy and make sure that we can do it on contingency if it doesn't do what we want it to. So we can turn it and maybe get something else that will, so it's all going to be about recording and, you know, being able to capture everything that's in the meetings and be able to download. Comes with a USB cable, you know, it comes everything so you can download a computer media, so.
That, my only concern out of all this reading, and the ones that you guys seen, was they doesn't have the one point five mil end. That doesn't mean they're not good cameras or they're not going to work, I just.
They have an attachable one you can attach to it or you can take it off, so if you want to use it for different applications. There was one was in there for about the same price, it's actually for an outdoor too. That's kind of thinking like if we get the grant and while they're doing it something that's weatherproof, we could actually set up and kind of watches and progresses on that too, so. Just multiple different styles, but.
Any other comment? Like I said, I don't know.
Any about cameras? Sixty Minutes had a spot on the GoPros the other day.
That's the outdoor one that I have, yeah, that's a nice camera.
Yeah, like at, at that point, I'm not opposed to putting the microphone back to them when people are just speaking. You know, I don't, it doesn't bother me if they don't come up front, some people don't like to, but. You know, I don't, it doesn't bother me if they don't come up front, some people don't like to, but we may have to put a mic back there.
She does manage, we're gonna probably use it at about twenty-five, thirty feet, maybe, maybe a little closer she goes, it should be able to capture everything there you do, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any public comment, Susie?
At our last chamber meeting, um, we approved, um, our events for the next year. And I've made up packets for the village council, I've made up packets for the planning commission and the DDA, and for Sam and for Scott to know what's happening. Um, what the chamber's doing in the events, so everything is all in these little packets, and that way, we just, we wanted to communicate with everyone and let everybody know what was happening. Uh, we post a lot of stuff on our webpage, and we also post a lot of stuff on our Facebook page, but, so this is, that's what we voted on, um, at our last council, or council meeting, at our last, excuse me, at our last, um. Chamber meeting. So I have packets for, for each of you, and I see Denise isn't here, and then for, for Sam, and just so you guys kinda know what's happening and what's coming down.
Thank you, that's great, it's nice to see that. I know last year we had some confusion in, in scheduling of the park and the different things, is each one of these, um, proposals, or what you're trying to do, where you're doing it at? Are they named in there for us so we know, such as, uh, Fourth of July festivities or, or whatever?
Yeah, there's the park, and I, and I will let you know that the Lions Club Pavilion, um, it's in here, but on July the twenty-sixth, is we have combined Antrim Outdoor Fest and the All-American Picnic and Pie Bake Off that same day. So what we've done to, instead of kinda stretching them out, we've combined them, and we have already reserved to Lyle, um, Bill Truscott did, um, the Lions Club Pavilion. So the big pavilion is open, as we've already reserved, we've already reserved that at Lyle.
That was gonna be my next question, it's, it's a reservation, another thing's getting with Rachel, I think was gonna start taking over some of the.
This was done before.
Lyle decided to keep that, that meeting.
Okay.
This was done before Loba. So anyways, thank you, appreciate you guys' support, and girls.
It's supposed to be counted, we went over it somehow, not more.
Thank you. You're welcome. And if anybody has any questions, just give us a call, yeah, you're welcome, here goes Scott. And I do wanna say, um. I do wanna say that, um, I appreciated Sam's help, we are having a, a new event this year on winter night for, you know, I'll thank you, I'm the tree. Alton State Bank has donated the lights for the tree, and Ralph Heinz, and that's listed in there, um, has said that he will string them, but it has to be the day after deer season, so. So anyways, but, a lot of the stuff, some of the events are quite set in stone, but the majority of this is stuff that we wanna do in the village, and that's where we're at.
This is nice, thank you, thank you.
Sure, yep, you're welcome.
That's all the book.
Do you have any questions? Oh, I have a question, I'm sorry, I'm not done, I guess. I talked to Bart Patton today, and Bart is gonna get, um, I believe with you, Ken, have you talked to him? Oh, okay, I didn't know where we.
I'm in church?
Yes.
Rachel's gonna call tomorrow and be like.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
I heard of Bart, it was late in the day, and it didn't happen today, but.
Okay, that's fine, I just have to.
I called Bart, I don't know, he's different tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you.
And I got the newsletter you guys put out, great, I need it, very nice.
Well, that's what we wanna continue doing and getting this stuff out, and so, we're all on the same page, and this one's not gonna conflict any that, and we're all here to help and work together, so that's what we're doing.
It's a great start for my vision.
I'd give it three days and it'll be that. I said I'd give it three days and it'll be that.
I know, that's not gonna happen.
So does that water make it break down?
Does that truck start?
I heard it tried to turn over. Start a grating.
Any other business for the board? I accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
Motion by Clark. Second by there, all in favor? Aye. We need adjourned.
Bill conservative.